Foxfire Village Council Meeting of March 11. I'm sorry, yes, March 11, 2025. Let the record show that all council members are present as well as members in the audience. Start with an opening prayer, Councilwoman Gilroy.
Well, thank you this afternoon. We thank you again for the privilege to gather collectively and to work through the things that are important to our village and to our residents. And I just, I pray for everyone in our village who's struggling, those who are struggling financially, those who are struggling with sickness, things that just aren't going right. And I just ask you to begin those situations and turn them around, that this village will prosper in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have a couple of changes to the agenda or additions.
You do.
On the consent agenda, I need to add the closed meeting minutes of February 14th, 2025, regarding personnel activities. And then I have, I'm gonna add, under the mayor's report, citizens' comments. And then under new business, interlocal agreements. And that's, those are the changes that I have.
I have a couple.
Yes?
Under streets and parks, so regarding the park trail, and regarding at the park, the septic tank and the, and pool, the septic tank.
Any other changes?
Yes.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agendas?
A motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None being. On a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None being. Okay. Let's go to public comments. And these are public comments for anything that is not listed on our agenda. So any general questions or comments? Of the audience? None being. We're moving on to the zoning administrator's report. Report does not, is pretty brave. It covers activity from February 12th through today, March 11th. Still occur, total of 22 homes under construction. There were two single-family resident applications approved for a house on Sixwood Shamrock and one in the ETJ on Hups Vista. Two certificate of zoning compliance were issued for 368 Quarterfield Lane and 165 Parxel Lane, designated ETJ. And then for other permits issued, it was one fence, one accessory building, one pool, and one temporary sun. Is that it? Any questions for? Zoning administrator?
I do have one, just.
Yeah.
Probably just later. The TAP, the, okay, you know what the charge is for a TAP, the?
Nineteen twenty-five.
Nineteen hundred twenty-five.
And that does vary based on the size and if there's really involved?
Well, the boring's an addition, yeah.
And the size of the, I think the one inch versus two quarters.
Yeah, I don't, usually ninety-nine cent pounds on a three-quarter inch.
The TAP is based on the cost to install the service, has it, has it been reviewed recently?
It was reviewed, kind of about four years ago, when we had, we had a big review on it, and it was based on actual time.
Right.
And we looked at other components, at all the components that were arrived, yeah.
But it's about four years ago?
Yes.
You might wanna review that cost one up. I think a TAP is probably more than $2,000 now.
Well, go look at, when I was doing, that's, I was the last one to do it, and I went through it with, yes. Um, I had, I think I can find all my work out if you want, spreadsheet of what?
Will you just go back and pull a couple invoices?
That true?
Yep.
Okay.
Mayor, as you mentioned, you were saying something to get the next work session, you guys would start looking at these schedules, so that's part of. That's a good idea, add that to the theme. Anything else? No? Moving on. Finance, Councilwoman Gilroy.
Cash balances as of February 28th, I just realized, I didn't make copies for y'all, I'm sorry. We, the accountant just got me work this afternoon, it was a tight term, so if you wanna copy this, I'll be happy to make you one afterwards, okay? In the general fund, you can see petty cash, First Bank, total is 444,714. In the capital trust account, there is now a total of $3,231,668. That reflects a transfer of the $700,000 last month, giving us you a grand total in the general fund of $3,676,000 and change. Water fund, in First Bank, we have 397, 397,378. In the capital trust account, there were 705,000, I'm sorry, in the total capital trust, there's 880,356, giving us a grand total in the water fund, $1,277,834. You guys all have your updated budget to actuels, courtesy of Shannon. And I'll come to that in a second. That's all I have, financial updates, okay? On county fire department funding, Janet and I went to a meeting with a couple weeks ago.
Janice.
Janice, sorry. Janice, Janet, yeah, we went to a meeting, they had all the fire commissioners there, and there are three, I think, three takeaways from there. The first one is, we gotta look at upcoming requirements for FY '26 and FY '29, okay, for West End. There is, and I've got this up here, I have it, there is a truck coming up in '26 for $550,000. I bring that up because when we go to budget, I think I'm gonna strongly suggest that we have a public safety reserve, and we start looking at setting aside for whatever we agreed to a portion for that to be, so that we're not surprised, that's one thing. Second thing is, Wayne Vess, the county manager, asked the fire commissioners to consider the Consumer Price Index as they were looking for funding this year, which is important, because the Consumer Price Index did not go up. It didn't move much in 2024. And the third thing is, where the county this year, they changed how they fund, and there were two buckets. There was an operational bucket and a capital bucket, and this year, they're gonna ask also for a personnel bucket, which gives a lot of transparency, I think, to cost. And so those are the three takeaways, and of course, we'll start working with this, with West End, I'm sure, fairly soon, on what that's gonna look like, okay? And then last but not least, our favorite evolution of the year, the FY '25, '26 budget. We've been through parks and streets, we've been through cop shops, so we need admin and water. I don't have any revenue numbers from the county yet, I'll start checking this year, I think we got them last year, about the end of March. And that should give us a little bit of a look at what revenue's gonna look like, and then we just start moving through it. We probably, because of how the county approves, won't be able to approve it, I wouldn't approve it, I don't think, until the county approves theirs because of the fire department funding. So we might have to have a special, hopefully, I mean, a special meeting, be very quick, because everything will be ready to go. And if we need a special work session, because I know there's a lot of stuff coming up on work sessions, if we need a special work session to work on budget, I'll just bring it up and we can decide what we wanna do.
We usually need a couple of special work sessions.
Yeah, but we'll get through every department, and then Jody has offered to look at our salary spreadsheet, which is, which is great, and I may have her change a few things, just so we can break out, like, because not everybody works just for one department, that kind of thing, so we can just get a clearer picture of those things. And she said, I love doing that, and I said, well, that's just awesome. Because I, not only do I not, I don't think I could, so, and that is all I have.
Where are we on our tax collection revenue?
Tax collection, hang on a second. We're about 30,000 short.
Oh.
But I just, hang on, I just got her thing.
So we have 30,000 that has not been paid?
Yeah. Yep. And I'm gonna ask him about that too. Our sales tax revenue is ahead, we've been pulling about 50 grand a month, which is great, just a little under 50,000. And we only budgeted 500,000, so we're gonna pick up some extra there.
What are we at now, about roughly?
Hang on, hang on, hang on. It's all in spreadsheets. Oh, no, sorry, 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 sorry.
I mean, is it 600? Is it not that high?
Hang on, I'm gonna play, I just gotta get in the right sheet. Yes, to cover all my budget commitments, I suppose. He asked me for sales tax revenue, right?
I did.
391,738.
391.
Almost 392.
And that's?
Budgeted what?
Year-to-date.
We budgeted half a mil, so you have four months left to go in. So we're definitely ahead. And some of the other things we're a little behind on, but if I'm not mistaken, that's an annual, and I'm gonna check on a couple of those.
They were not that significant, I don't think.
No, the only one, the video franchise tax is fairly significant, but that's actually right on track. Adwood taxes, 882,489 out of 914, out of 914,000, so we're just 31,000 short.
That's amazing.
Actually, pretty good, yeah.
Yep. Good, alright.
That is all.
Any other questions for finance?
Just saying, yeah.
You know.
Will you send us a template of the budget for, we start, like, you mentioned City House being blown over? Send like a blank template?
Actually, you know what, if you take your current.
I've got an electronic, like, do you have a?
I do not.
Current one, it's quite far.
Will you?
Manipulate, do you have one?
You know, we can, I can probably spend you on that.
Well, I can take the current one, just.
Well, what we did was, we just sat down with the current.
Yep.
Just tagged in FY '25, '26, fine, because a lot of it, a lot of numbers have not changed, right? In fact, I'm hoping our expenses actually will go down a little bit, but.
And we're gonna do an Excel again, right?
Yeah.
But then, does that later on go into the financial system, they got the necessary?
Yes, well, well, yes, it is, put in there.
And there's no way you can go directly with that?
I would prefer not to.
Okay.
Because once it's in there, yeah, once it's in there, if you need to manipulate it, it, it's a lot like mixing concrete.
Yeah, I would not suggest everyone having that.
I would rather trust Jody to do that for us, yeah, yeah.
Well, I did it last time, but, yeah. Okay. Any other questions for finance? Okay, moving on, streets and parks, Councilman Norton.
Oh, good news, bad news this month. Okay, so we'll start with the good news. I don't know if you guys noticed, but the septic tank at the pool has been replaced. Here's the new one, nice and shiny.
You should have that in color.
Well, I have it in color.
It is that color.
It's white. So that got put in, and so that's all good and set to go for the septic there. The septic tank at the park is going to be, hopefully drained this weekend. And he's gotta bring in a little jack and pull it all out, all the dirt and everything, so that's gonna be worked on this weekend. So the other good news is, we have control burn at the park, in the park trails, on Friday. And I just wanna say thank you, Eric, he sent the fire department over for us, just in case. But we did burn all three loops, so those are done. And we actually got some nice rain last night to put it all out. Bad news is, I was informed yesterday that we had a sinkhole in the yellow trail, and I did take some pictures, and it's pretty extensive, it's right there in the trail. I have Black Rock Landscaping coming out, who manages our trails, and he had to call in the county to come in, because there was a drainage tube under that portion of the trail. And it has deteriorated. And what happened is, nothing underneath the, the sand, which is the trail. We had the drainage tube, and then the dirt, which is about four feet down. Well, we take out the drainage tube, and there's four feet down. And I found that out after it broke underneath me. So that is hopefully gonna be fixed by the end of the weekend.
What was the cost? We got a cost on it?
No, he's, no, the county just came in today.
What does the county have?
Because once you have a sinkhole in an area such as a public area.
Okay.
They come in and inspect it.
Okay.
And so, yes, we will have to replace the drainage tube. They tell them what size it has to be and so on and so forth. They're gonna have to fill it in with rock to bring it back up, and so I can't give you a cost right now.
But you'll need a budget amendment, right?
Yeah, I, you know, my favorite thing.
When you hit a dozen, you're cut off, no?
I'm getting there. But hopefully, that will be done this weekend. I've got cones up, I put caution tape up. I hope people are not walking around those, because that ground around the cones, there's nothing under there, and it will collapse. So please do not walk around or through that area right now. It, what?
How deep is it?
It's deep, it's over four feet deep. So, and, you know, if you're not paying, well, you can't see the caution tape in the cones, something's wrong, because I've got four of them across there. So I just wanna warn everybody, and I think Lisa is going to put a picture up to not use that trail, that portion of the trail. So either get to that point and turn around, or the other way and turn around, don't walk on it.
Should we close that trail?
Good luck. Eric had a great suggestion, and, and I think we need to take him up on it. He talked to me about that barrier, barriers, is that what you call them?
Just barricades, rather than just cones. You can do a software style, or you can do a heavier-duty metal. But then you could also get some signs that say, "Park closed, trail closed,"
Right.
that you could put on those.
And I have to agree with that, and I think we should do that, where we can have some signs, where we can use those barriers in other areas. Because, believe it or not, even though we had signs and cones and caution tape saying the trails were closed, guess what? Didn't matter. You know, right after the burn, what I was concerned about, there were small pockets of stumps that were still burning. My concern was, is that people were going to go in there with their dogs, release their dogs, and who's to say if that, if there were embers underneath, and release their dogs and let them go running and stuff. You know, that's why we closed the trails. And there was a reason for it. But the cones and the caution tape don't work anymore. So that's my concern, is the liability of this whole situation. When we do have to close trails for maintenance, or whatever the case may be, we don't want people in there for a reason.
Well, we need to put that in the budget then, for next year.
Yeah, but I think we can share that across, but, you know, police can use it if they're blocking off a road. Eric has agreed to get me the cost of what they would run, but I think we need to invest in something like that, because, and especially for the park, if I have to close those trails, I want those trails closed. And, and again, it's for safety reasons, I'm not doing it just to upset people. Liability.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? I think I covered everything, but again, thank you, Eric, for all your help on that whole thing. Any, any questions? Okay, I'm done.
Okay. Water department, Councilwoman Morgan.
All right. The pipe replacement project at well site number four is completed now, and we'll be invoicing it shortly. PO went out for the maintenance on the exterior of well number four, built the building for well number four, and also PO for the maintenance on the exterior of the building for well number five. And those are scheduled to be completed by the first week in April. The North Carolina Department of Environment Quality had a representative out. They did their annual inspection of our system, in particular, the well sites. Jesse, Soffler, and David Q, accompany the individual. We only had a couple minor issues that were noted, and they were taken care of immediately. Jesse did take the, the distribution exam on February 27th. Again, the state has posted on the website that he has passed the test, but he hasn't received an official notification of it. We replaced this, kind of routine stuff, we replaced 75 effective meters. These meters are still recording, you know, manually, it's just the electronic element has to be replaced on it, but they manually read.
No, we send those out, and we get a rebate on them.
Yes, we do, yes. And our stock new meters has been replenished, and on well number 13, the construction, the construction package was sent to the state, and we're waiting for their approval to begin construction. Thank the mayor for, in my absence, putting a signature on the documents. It's good, we, one extra, anything we can do to, that thing we, we really wanna get. We did meet with the, with the owner, to see if he can help us expedite the project now.
Do we have any, any hope of a data at this point?
No, actually, it's really up to the, I guess that the contractor said that he'll do everything he can. They realized they were kinda, they, that slipped through the cracks, and they had worked out the western part of the state. They had some clients out there that they felt because of the, you know, the damage done by the flooding, that they were gonna talk about all week, so.
I mean, we're looking at April, May, June? December?
I think we're looking at, I think, I think we're realistic, probably May. I was gonna guess.
Okay. Any questions for water? No? Was that it?
That's it.
Okay. Moving on, public safety, Councilman Nelson.
Okay, Fire Chief Michael, you're on deck.
I'm on deck. Have you guys gone save?
Great.
Um, all of you guys, I gave you a call sheet for the, I don't know if everybody's got it, same. Kind of start off is, obviously, we've had 1,100 events over the month, and we said that doesn't include everything we pretty much do, but we're up actually about 400 calls over the month from last year. Last year, we had about, I say calls, events were serviced. Last year, it's 733, and February, last year, we're at 1,134 so far, or, or, all of February.
Was there a certain category that, that spiked, or was it across the board?
It's just across the board, so, yeah, we've noticed every month, you know, based off our activity, everything has gone up, you know, some, not, not drastic amounts, but obviously, we're staying on top of our premise checks, as you can see, but our citations are up to almost 150 of last month, for a 28-day month, and two of the guys have been in school for a whole week at times, so citations are still looking pretty good in that sense, but, yes, like you said, it, our, our premise checks take a lot, just because, you know, we're trying to make sure that we're shaking handles and everything else is good as far as in time. I, last month, I mentioned that we put out speed signs, or we had our speed signs out, obviously, but I went and reset the signs last month, kind of get a count, see what we had going through town, and where everybody's at, and speeding and so on. So, an astounding number, on average, just on Hoffman Road, we had a, in one-month time frames, 44,000 cars. Yeah, that's from end to end on each side. I believe a sign right here in front of the PD was at 41,000, some change. On the other end of town, coming in off from Mike Roseland area, was 46,000, so we're averaging about 44,000. I had no idea it'd be as high as it is, but nonetheless, that's why I went ahead and done that, just to figure out what's what, and it's kind of jaw-dropping at that point. But we're on approximately 94% compliance as far as the speed of town, again, 94%. Yes, and again, we're giving everybody a, approximately a five mile per hour buffer. 94% within, you know, 45 mile per hour through many towns is, is pretty good. Obviously, we have some on, on some of our surface streets and everything, those numbers are up, are actually a little bit higher than, it's probably around the 95, 96 range, so. We're doing good in that sense, we're kinda, everybody makes sure they're following our visa queues. Obviously, I've reached out to you guys as far as, you know, various things we have going on. I know I said something about doing our destruction orders and everything, perfecting our evidence room. We have several orders now up to the DA's office, they have to look over everything, approve, get the judge to sign off. Once we get those back, we'll send another batch of orders. Those have been gone for about three weeks now, I haven't heard of anything, so it's, it's taking time, but I think we sent about 15 of them this go-around. So it's just gonna be, it's gonna be a lot longer process than we initially anticipated, but it is what it is. Obviously, as we know, we had the brush fire down the road here, down here in the ETJ, also, Western Fire, they come out, several other fire departments, but James went out there and assisted, whatever way he stood, and so, again, hats off to him for that. He has signed up for LiDAR class at the end of this month, I want you to know about LiDAR, similar to radar, but it's used by a laser device, we have to have that device already in-house, so just more speed, more, what would happen, once he has that.
Is he the only one that has that?
Currently, yes, currently, yes.
And how long is that certification good for?
It's good for three years, I guess, and it's a one-day class, since he's already radar certified, he'll have to take hold of it, and he takes that one class, he'll take the test, and then he passes the class and test, he'll be certified in that.
So what would it cost to send him there as?
It's, it's technically free of charge outside of, you know, anything else. Obviously, we can't send everybody at one time, because we all came down. We have done that, obviously, like with Caleb and James, they, we sent both of them last month through a class. Prior to, Caleb and Derek went to a class together, and we all just kind of back through. Last week, myself and Derek went to a class, an investigation class on human trafficking. It may not seem like it's a big thing for us, but it's actually an eye-opening experience, and things that we saw was, we have obviously a lot of elderly in our community, and there's human trafficking ring that involves that as well.
Really?
Yeah. It's crazy to hear, I had no idea myself, yeah, it was, like I said, very eye-opening thing. It's not just kids.
You do the housework, you know?
Yeah. A lot of financial debt and things like that.
Wow.
So, yes. So I said, myself and Derek went last week to a class, it was a day-long, a lot of thing, or a seminar camp, so, you know, drop them, kid.
So did they talk about statistics anywhere around here in our, our county?
No, they did not.
Okay.
No, they did not. There is something that myself and Derek are actually be privy to now, and, every week, I didn't know this, they do a meeting at McCarthy's from the hospital, obviously, like friend-to-friend, which you guys know about friend-to-friend, but, various things like that, they all come together, and by law enforcement, EMS and everything, so we're able to be on board with that, and kind of figure out the proper avenues and channels to take, in event we had something like that. So we do have that, and we will be attending that here probably next week. But like I said, that's kind of a, a weekly or re-occurred thing, so we'll have that little gambit to kind of go with. But outside of that, that's all I really have. To, to touch on what you said just a moment ago, as far as the park trail and everything, obviously, we spoke with Lisa, and I did talk to Foxfire Cryer, right, he sent me a mail a little while ago, asking that that be pushed out on Facebook and so on, that way, other folks can, hey, just wait to steer clear of that area. At least don't be able to trail that way, we don't have to worry about somebody going out and getting hurt. Outside of that, that's all we've got. Questions?
Thank you.
It's her, thank you.
Next up, we got Fire Chief Eric.
So February was actually a little slower than January for us, down in Foxfire, we ran 20 calls, had. That represents about twenty-eight percent of our calls for the month, uh, much slower than it was in January. The staff has started kind of our spring activities. They started a, a week and a half ago. They started power washing the exterior of the building. Uh, we're getting ready to paint the balusters that are outside of the stations, the concrete. And just kinda get the outside of the building cleaned up. We do that at both stations each year. Coming up, we have our annual hose testing. We have to test every section of hose that we have once a year. Um, and that's several thousands of feet, uh, so uh, they'll be working on that starting next week. Then we will also be inspecting and flow testing all of the fire hydrants. So I'll get up with Jesse and make sure we know where we're gonna do that. That takes us generally about three to four weeks. Um, we'll make sure we get up a few so we can put the notices out when we start the Foxfire, because it does set, uh, upset some of the sediment that's in the pipes and it may have some discolored water for a little while. But we'll let you know, we'll get that word out from that. We have had a number of large outside brush fires. I'd like to thank the PD for helping with that, but um, there's been one down in Pine Left, one over in Cameron. We had one here on Foxfire Road um, this past weekend. So uh, it's, now that we've had a little rain, it should be a little bit better, uh, but we did help out with the burn and that coverage. I would also say thanks to the PD, cause they helped with traffic control, cause we shut down Foxfire Road. Also, we had a gas tanker, um, have a, its brakes on fire at Hoffman and Woodland Circle. Eighty-seven hundred gallons of fuel on the truck. Um, we were a little bit concerned for a little while, but thankfully it ended up not being anything major and the gentleman driving the truck did put out the brakes with the extinguisher prior to our arrival. But again, the road was closed down partially for a while. PD came out and helped with that. In terms of, I've done a little bit of research on the barricades. We did talk about, you know, there's a couple types of barricades that are out there, and I think really a combination of them would make the most sense. Short-term ones would be more of a sawhorse style. It's just kinda two legs and a reflective. But if you're gonna have something where you wanna close for a long period of time, you probably want one with a little bit more heaviness to it. Especially if you're gonna do a roadway, um, and you know, average cost is anywhere from about a hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars per six to eight foot barricade. And then from there, you can apply, like I said, the signs that says park closed or trail closed or road closed, so.
Will you get that to Michael?
Yeah, I'll, I'll email that.
Okay.
I'll email to both of y'all.
Oh, okay, thank you.
That way you have it. Um, and then in terms of just budget stuff, we're still up in the air, cause they are constantly changing it on us. So I know that that's coming up. I know the Fire Commission meets um, Thursday, so we'll have a little bit better idea of that. And then staffing wise, I know that's always a concern. We are actually in the process of transitioning one of our full-time guys from shift work to Monday through Friday, and we've hired another person to be on shift. So that should help us balance that out a little bit more. You know, the challenge that we have, like anybody, when you bring somebody in new, I can't let somebody straight out of the academy drive a half million to million dollar truck, uh, and be responsible by himself, so we're working through that uh, with our newest hire. So, appreciate your support and uh, let us know if we can do anything else. I know we've helped with the park and culverts and stuff like that. We can try to help out wherever we can.
I have a question. Do we, do you know what caused like the fire on Foxfire Road? Cause it's not like we had a lightning storm or what, any idea?
It's gonna, officially it's gonna be undetermined at this stage. There were some noise about possibly people with four-by-fours driving back through the wooded area. We've had, we actually had a vehicle fire right here on Jackson Springs Road. It was a gentleman in an older truck and the, the tall wire grass, his uh, exhaust caught, caught fire. The grass caught fire because of the heat of the exhaust. But I do know the one over in Cameron was people shooting and an ejected shell landing in very dry. When you get to the really dry humidity, you have a higher probability of something like that happening. Don't have an exact one on this one.
Just curious. Yeah, just curious.
Then they did, I mean, the one down here, it was a woods fire, field fire, but then it turned into a structure fire in about a dozen vehicles. Huge propane tank, lots of things exploding for a short period of time. So it was kinda tense for a while.
How far down Foxfire Road was it?
Right up High Crest Court.
Oh, and right, right back by the park that's incorporated into the building.
Yeah. And then uh, just some people may have seen it today. They had a big fire on Carthage Road at Fat Monkey, um, right there. So if you wonder why there's vehicles parked all over the place, it's, we had six of our trucks out there, about seventeen people assisting with that. It's in Seven Lakes, it's district, but real close for us to get there. So if you go to get to that Fat Monkey place there, it's no longer there. It's well involved when they got there. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
That's it? Okay. All right, I have got um, just an update on the Foxfire Boulevard parking letters. Those letters have been constructed and they'll be mailed out, uh, probably this week. I would say by the end of the week, they'll be mailed out certified mail to the owners of those properties. And then we had a special meeting scheduled for April twenty-fourth at six P M. To discuss um, any questions or concerns that um, people may have regarding specifically Foxfire Boulevard. So that'll be a special meeting that we're gonna have. So that's, that's that. And then the citizen comment, um, I did receive, well, we did receive an email. Um, thank you very much. And so the email, basically, I'll read it. It's um, "With the upcoming election for three open seats on Foxfire Village, it is crucial to consider the impact of our council meeting start times and potential candidates. In order to promote greater participation in the election process, particularly those with full-time jobs, please reconsider moving the meeting time to a, to a time later in the day." And I just wanna say that we have discussed this in the past and um, we can bring this up in our network session and we can discuss it again. So some of us are not opposed to it and some people are. So we will discuss that issue again as far as changing the meeting times. Then um, it goes on to say, "With the current meetings at four-thirty, you are severely, severely limiting the candidate pool as many younger residents who worked during the day are unable to run for election. By shifting the meeting times to later in the evening, we would be creating an opportunity for a more diverse and representative council that better reflects the demographics and interests of our community. This change would not only encourage more residents to run for council seats, but also with any luck, promote greater meeting attendance. A more inclusive approach to scheduling can lead to a richer variety of viewpoints and ideas, ultimately benefiting our entire village. Thank you for considering this proposal. Please address this at your next council meeting, as I believe it is a positive step towards fostering more inclusive and representative local government." And I do wanna thank the citizen for submitting the letter. I think it's important for people to feel comfortable to voice concerns and questions. I just wanna make a couple of comments, um, and that is as far as what council people really do. We don't just come to meetings and get information shuffled to us and we talk about it. The council members are very active, all during the week, all during the day. And most of our work is done between nine o'clock in the morning and four o'clock in the afternoon. We are talking to contractors, we're talking to state departments, you know, state and local government people. We have meetings that are scheduled. We also have classes that we attend. And a lot of them, most of them are during the day, during the normal working hours. So it's a big commitment in hours, um, and time. And I think anyone who is considering running for council, that does have a full-time job, needs to really understand the commitment. And I'll let some people talk about that after I'm done. I think what you have to realize is that working on this city council is a true public servant, because there's no money and it's a lot of time, so.
I heard there were perks, either I find them or.
Oh yeah, I get to put toilet paper in the bathrooms. Again, you know, there, we're getting, we're getting votes. We're getting, we're doing all the work that goes behind what goes on. We have two and a half administrative staff when it comes to, other than our water technician. So anything else that goes on in this town is done by council members. And it's mostly done during the day, uh, even, you know, conversations with our attorney. We are going to be scheduling uh, a meeting sometime in May, a public meeting, a council meeting, uh, with our attorney to address anyone who's interested in running for council, so that they can understand the responsibilities, the commitments that are required, the laws and the statutes that we need to be abreast of as best we can. And, but there's a lot of responsibility, again, a lot of time, and it's mostly during the day. I would say nine percent of what we do is during the day. I just wanna make that comment and um, having a full-time, this is almost a full-time job. It's pretty close, it is. I, I always tell people, this is my first full-time unpaid job I've ever had. So I don't know, I know Mary, you were.
I wanna say something. Um, I, of course, am in favor of changing the meeting time, it's not, but different discussion. But I work twenty-five to thirty hours a week. And although I don't like to admit this, and it will not surprise any of you, there are a lot of times when I don't think that I have enough time to put in to doing everything that really needs to be done. And I'm generally not considered a slacker, okay? And if you work full-time, you really need to think it through, even if you work remote. My husband works remote and you'll think he's clear and all of a sudden bam, somebody pops a Zoom call, somebody, you know, something happens. And so um, working, I'm not trying to discourage anyone who works full-time from running, but I spend a lot of time at night trying to catch up on things and sometimes it's like, are you ever gonna turn your laptop off? Well, no, because I'm not done, because I worked today. And the other thing too is, if you work, I realize that my schedule often drives when we can do special meetings and stuff like that, because there are certain days of the week that just don't work for me and I probably have more flexibility than most in trying to, you know, swap shifts and get time off. So I wouldn't discourage somebody who has a full-time job from running, but I will tell you, it will put you up against the wall in terms of time and the ability to dedicate, especially dependent upon what department you're gonna run. Being able to dedicate yourself to the things that really need to get done. And that's a, that's, I don't like saying that, but that is the truth.
It, it is a job, so I just want people to understand that we don't have a, a full staff just doing everything and we just come up here and, and recap what happened during the week. So, anyway, I just wanted to make sure people understood that and again, we'll be communicating more about that in the uh, in our main meeting for sure. And I do welcome, I do welcome comments and suggestions and emails, that's a great thing. And I want people to feel free to email us with their questions, comments, and concerns. Any, any questions for me on that or anything? No? Okay, on to new business. Um, I just wanna bring up, and we will discuss this in our next work session. This is an interesting um, thing that has been brought to our attention. It's an interlocal agreement from the county with Foxfire. As far as allowing the county to uh, take over the zoning of a part of our ETJ. It's an eight acre parcel, and if you look at behind the, the letter, it's an eight acre parcel of a person's property, a hundred and thirty-three acre parcel that, that is right on Hoffman Road. And this would be the entrance to the proposed development that they want to do on, on this property. This property, this hundred and thirty-three acres is in the county, okay, for the most part. There's eight acres right on the road that's in our ETJ. That's why they're asking for the county to take over zoning of the entire parcel. And correct me if I'm saying anything incorrect at this point. Where, where is this? It's right, do you know where Nats Creek is? It's right across the street from Nats Creek. It's like, where at Hoffman?
Jackson.
It's Jackson Springs Road. I'm sorry, I said Hoffman Road. I'm sorry, it's Jackson Springs Road, okay? So it's, it's right across from Nats Creek, basically, if you know where that is. It's maybe up a little, but it's kinda right across from there. And what it is, and I'll just go very closely, if you remember the, the golf hard.
Beaver Springs.
The golf hard V development that was proposed years ago, that was, did not occur, which was in our ETJ and we had a little bit more control over that. This is in the county, this is across the street on county property. So it's just across the street from the first proposal.
Yeah.
And again, this is, what we've been given looks more to me like marketing material than it is an actual development plan.
Looks like it, looks like I'm looking for investor money materials, what it looks like, which is fine, I mean, that's mostly what.
But that's, this is, this is not, as far as we know, not been presented to the county.
No.
It doesn't have real, it has specific details in words, but um, they're looking for an eighteen-hole golf course with ninety cabins and fifty homes and different phases. And this is on a hundred and thirty acres and I know that there's wetlands in there. I, I, I don't know, but anyway. This is what this interlocal, we're waiting for our attorney to give us some advice on moving or not moving forward with allowing the interlocal agreement or not. We'll be discussing this. This is public information, so it will be available for people to look at.
But we only own.
That, that yellow.
We don't own, but it's, it's in the ETJ.
ETJ, so of the hundred and thirty-three, eight acres is the only concern that we have.
Right, but that's their proposed entrance.
Yeah, exactly. They can't do this if we don't give them the right of way to that property.
Or, well, I'm more concerned about what they put there and what it looks like, more than, you know.
Well, if I'm gonna join a property owner, I'll get it right by now.
So anyways, I just want people to know, this is what's, this is what's been presented to us. Again, we cannot control a hundred and thirty-three acres. We have no control over that. It's in the county. We can open the buffer of that eight.
So I have a question, is this the hundred and thirty-three acres?
The whole thing is a hundred and thirty-three, including, including the eight.
This is the eight.
Right, so that, that whole parcel is a hundred and thirty-three something.
Okay.
And then the, the, that entrance, the eight acres, approximately eight acres.
So if we didn't agree to this, I'm sure they could figure out a way to change their entrance, didn't they? And then we have no control.
Well, we have, we have no, we have, again, we only have control and it's only to, of the eight.
Of the entrance.
I just want, you know.
The biggest driver will be whether Jackson Springs, which they will, that their landowners just get it on the floor. Because that's the thing that stopped Beaver Springs. And even though the county now has approved high-impact recreation, which I'm sure they would consider that to be um, resident dissent, plays a pretty big.
There's, this is causing a lot of traffic and.
Well, not only that, there's also a lot of lighting that's proposed and marketing material.
Yeah, night, night golf.
Yep. So anyway, want people to know.
I wouldn't.
Yeah, so we'll talk about it in our work session. We need to review the.
Maybe we'll hear from Nick, I mean, he's.
No, he's not.
Yeah.
He's, he's looking at it. And I'm basically asking him his advice to what, what, what do we lose, what do we gain by an interlocal, by agreeing or disagreeing to the interlocal? So I just wanna know what our, what our options are.
Are they looking at an eighteen-hole golf?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's no competition then with us, so, okay.
Yeah. So anyway, that's that. That'll be in our work session next month or next.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
This interlocal was proposed, was by the county?
Yes.
By who? Plan, planning, they're, they're.
Yeah. So are they?
We've done one before, I'm sorry.
They have not approved this at all, no. If they've been presented with this, then we know. Okay, so that they're, why are they putting the court?
It's just because of the parcel.
It's the, it's the parcel saying, I want, I wanna do something in this parcel, this is what I'm assuming. And they're saying, but, you know, Foxfire has this little thing and, well, if we have an interlocal agreement, they can take control of that eight, of that eight acres, if we agree.
Okay, so, so are we under the assumption that they don't know anything about this thing?
No, no, I guarantee they showed that to Esmer, or in order to get it to do this.
That's my question.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, well, we don't, I don't know that. Okay, well, we don't, I don't know that.
They know, they know about that.
I can't, I, I'm thinking, this wouldn't have come up unless this had come up first. I'm not sure, I don't know that, I don't know.
Let, let's just pretend that it did.
What?
I'm not gonna.
Okay.
Your work session coming up.
Yeah, okay, all right, we'll save that. So this is going in our work session, I want everyone to know about it, um, and I have, um, John Stone is aware of it as well, so.
Yeah, he'll, he'll, he'll get his group rolling.
So, that's that, we don't have any, do you have any more questions for me on this?
Uh-uh.
Um, we have no old business, now we have public comments for items listed on this agenda. Any public comments?
I'll make a public comment.
Please come up and state your name and address.
Thomas William McLawen.
How do you spell that?
Three Dogwood Court, Jackson Springs, North Carolina, called Foxfire Village.
What's the zip code? No, I'm just kidding.
Two-seven-two-eight-one. Um, what you just discussed, when I was on planning and zoning with this lovely young lady.
And you.
And you, uh, we went through this, and, uh, the people in the ETJ, um, convinced us that, uh, it was not something they were in favor of.
Mm-hmm.
So, I guess, the thing I'm hoping is that people in the ETJ are notified of this, and somehow can.
But it's not the ETJ, it's in the county.
Yes, I understand, but the county must have meetings.
They do, yes.
That, that people in the ETJ can attend.
Yes.
And express their discontent.
Yes.
So, I, that's the only reason I split up and had an opportunity to address this lovely group.
No, thank you, we, I'm sure the county is going to, and I'm sure John.
I'm not talking about you, no.
No insulting council members.
Bellamy, it's a bellamy. It's a public, it's a public service.
Any other public comments? None being? Have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I made a motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being?